And they also bringing bringing the overall the garage forward, including the carport, as you can see on the 3D model, rather than that being situated further back, that is now closer to the front elevation. Again, so the the first floor proposed plans, and this will create aim is to create a new bedroom and long suite. And at the rear of the property, this will also involve the creation of two new windows which are proposed to be and obscure glazed, which will be part of the conditions and on the side elevation of the landing and bathroom. Again, the elevations, just to kind of reiterate what I've discussed in the plans. So this is the existing elevation showing the garage and carport. And the side elevation with the high level window serving the living room. And the the main access door on the west elevation and the conservatory on the south elevation. Again, in terms of the and front elevation, we are trying to keep that the same as close as possible, maintaining the separation in terms of and the positioning of the the garage and carport, albeit that has moved further forward. Two new windows are proposed, as mentioned, and additional high level window and and additional bathroom window on the first floor. And so this is showing the the increase in length toward the rear and space instead. At naught point nine metre, essentially a step, this is the minimum requirement for for building regulations to have a naught point nine metre landing essentially. So this will then lead directly onto the to the garden and it will be stepped back away from the boundary wall with with number twenty two. And again, hopefully trying to increase the privacy and that can be afforded to both properties there. I will just go back through to the end. So yeah, touching on privacy. So this was a visibility display and produced by the agent for for this application. Again, just trying to highlight how privacy can be increased for for both properties, current visibility with the from from the first floor windows being observed into the the neighbours of eighteen twenty two. By bringing that elevation further to the rear, it does and bring those those livable spaces closer to the rear of the garden. However, the the lines of sight and allow for the the main patio and conservatory area to be behind the line of sight from from number twenty if this if this proposal is completed. And some objections have also raised the the level of shadowing and it is acknowledged that there due to the and nature of the structure and there will be potentially some and prevention of of direct sunlight at certain times of the day. However, due to the south facing nature of the site and general overshadowed, the 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 shadowing in general and will not be adversely affected to the point that we would object to the proposal as a whole. And so this is again the the proposed and proposed shadowing projection, again, details of which and within the and discussed within the officers' report. And this is again, the site plan is existing and that is that is everything for this presentation. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Yeah. So the the recommendation is to approve subject to the conditions listed in the report standard and in accordance with the plans and the time limit, as well as the obscure glazing on the first floor and new windows serving the bathroom and the landing.
Thank you very much. Now, we have now some speakers and I do apologize for my pronunciation. It's Mr Trunch. Trunch, yes. If you'd like to come forward, I think I may ask how long?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. You had three minutes to speak.
Minutes.
Yes.
So my name is Lesley Truch. I live at with my wife at twenty two Abingdon Way. We have happily lived there in the property for forty years, which is a long time, yeah? And happily until this disruption, obviously. And my wife and I feel like the proposed two storey extension at twenty Abingdon Way will impact never inevitably um upon our amenity. We consider that this development to be extremely overbearing in terms of its massing and poor architectural design. Currently, when sitting in our conservatory, we have unrestricted views to the west. Should this application be approved, our view will be restricted to that of a brown brick wall, which extends fully to the height of two stories, which not only impedes our view from the conservatory, but also impacts our amenity space. The two story nature of this extension would also cause loss of evening sunlight. Because on that shadowing, Matthew, it doesn't do anything post three o'clock in the afternoon. We're talking about the evening sun in the summer. Yeah. Right. The extension would also cause lots of uh loss of evening sunlight, especially in the summer months, which we have enjoyed for the last forty years. There is also a new bedroom window on the eastern side of the property. This window looks directly into our landing window, which certainly affects our privacy. Certainly. Now, you talked about the patio, you reduce the patio size and put a naught point nine platform. Because of the height of the patio, you can actually look into our garden, somebody even four foot three can actually look into our garden and they can actually look into our conservatory. So so this key part of our objection to privacy relates to the height of the ground floor and of the application property and the naught point nine metre patio step, which extends past our garage. Anybody over four foot three could see our fence into our garden and also see, look directly into our property. We did, we would also be able to look straight, we would also be able to look straight into the application property from our garden. This is definitely a major concern for us. Now, the buildability of it, while this is strictly not a planning issue, wait. Yeah, this is just there. While strictly not a planning issue, we are unsure as to how the proposed extension will be constructed, even if it's given its proximity to our garage, which forms the boundary of the property and is therefore a party wall. We're also concerned over the damage to our flat roof during any construction period and will not be allowing any access to our property for the purpose of scaffolding. Thank you for listening.
Good morning to respected members of committee. And firstly, I would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak against this planning application. I'm Wenya Wong, a professor of AI at UEA. My wife and I moved to Norwich in two thousand and two and have been living here for over twenty years, peacefully and happily until this happened. We got on very well with our neighbours, have never had any issue with anybody. But when we received this letter of planning application, we were shocked. We just could not believe this happened because we were told by the personal owner, the buyer, for this house, three bedroom house, for his young daughter to live in and wouldn't need any additional space, only to replace existing conservatory, which is reasonable or sacked. But all of a sudden, we receive this letter saying they are going to build massive two story extension, firstly, on the top of garage. Okay, um of course, it will have many adverse adverse impact on us. The life of quality, the environment and violate our residence right and privacy. So we objected. Then the owner revised their designs, but some problems, major issues are still there. For example, with this two story extension at the back of their house, basically was former used shape the environment with number sixteen, that will sandwich our conservatory. So on two sets, I can confirm what less said, this building will block their conservatory. We have already experienced that in our conservatory, we'll see number sixteen walls block our view sunshine in the afternoon. Now we have a new two story on the east, it will sandwich our conservatory, basically will feel trapped, surrounded. Our life will be affected seriously because we spend a lot of time over there. Secondly, quite least, they tried to add some new features, for example, open the windows on the first floor and second floor to attract, to get more light into their room. On the other hand, they increased the height of garage by twenty crucial twenty centimetre, that will block the lights to our lounge or narrow window. So they have other features just like this. They just want to achieve maximum benefit to themselves without considering others. Yeah, okay, thank you, Chair. Okay, so we think, because they don't need that special space. It is against the principle of your development, right? And also considering Matthew's report, we think there are some factual errors in the report, for example, the gaps and the windows. Hence, I think his decision unfortunately for recommending approval is unsound, is in upper rate. Hence, I request the committee to consider our reasons to reject this planning application in accordance with your rules. Thank you for your listening and consideration.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the officer for negotiating a revision to the original application from a few from a two story rear and two story side extension to a to the application before you today, which is a two story rear extension and works to the single story side of the property. I called in the original application because of loss of light, privacy and amenity. And although this application is an improvement on the original, I still support the neighbours as I continue to believe that this development is overbearing in its size and there are still issues of amenity, privacy and light. The report states that these nineteen seventies properties from twelve to twenty two Abingdon Way are evenly spaced and with the carport providing even separation between each dwelling, creating a uniform style of building. It is pleasing to the eye and the design has cleverly ensured privacy and light to each dwelling. It is this good design that is compromised by the changes proposed to number twenty. With regard to neighbours at number eighteen, the proposed twenty centimetre increase in the height of the carport and garage and its forward relocation will adversely affect the light to high level windows of the living room, which occur in the neighbour's property. They're only windows in 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 that ground floor side of the property. So although a modest increase in height of the garage and carport um in this proposal, the officer says in paragraph forty one, this may cause some degree of shadowing for light penetrating this window. This compromise in light will be keenly felt by the neighbours. And the the two two story, the rear two story extension protruding four metres from the existing end of the property um is of concern as it creates a form of enclosure to to number eighteen particularly, affecting their enjoyment of their conservatory and garden. The officer's report in paragraph thirty eight states, the building form will have some effect in regards to loss of light earlier in the morning. So this loss of early morning light coupled with the feeling of enclosure in the small rear garden of number eighteen represents a loss of their amenity. And we've already heard of loss of light to the neighbours at twenty two and their enjoyment of their garden. Finally, the decision to con condition obscured glass to the proposed new first floor window on the landing and face is welcomed as a way of protecting privacy. On balance, I feel this application lacks sensitivity to neighbours at eighteen and twenty two, affecting their ability to continue to fully enjoy their home and garden because of the size of the development affecting their amenity and privacy and levels of light. I believe a refusal of this application would be beneficial to a new application more sympathetic to the neighbour's concerns. Thank you for your time.
Um I'd like to address some of the comments so far. Um first of all, um all the new side windows to the east and west uh will be of obscured glass. This is for the neighbour's privacy, but my own privacy as well. Um the rear bedroom uh has moved down the garden, so there's no oversharing from the extension to the gardens uh of the joint of the neighbours. The patio will be stepped down to the existing lawn level, therefore will not overlook the neighbours. Um the house is actually, at the moment, I live out in the sticks and um I have, I have recently, last year I was quite ill, so that's why I've decided to buy the house. The house is my house, it's not my daughter's house, but she will be living there alone. Um until I move, I need to be on a, I will need to be on a bus route. And therefore, there will only be one car. One of the objections was that there might be four cars. No, there'll be one car. Um the garage at the rear uh hasn't changed in height or footprint and the extension uh will not be, will not go further past that footprint. So the extension will be no wider than the existing building. Um which was one of the objections, I understand. And I'll open to questions if anybody wants to. Okay, thank you.
And yeah, one thing I will address, and the the applicants mentioned that there is no increase in uh height of the proposed uh the the garage and the carport. And again, anything mentioned within the uh within the committee report is taken directly from the plans. And a calculated measurement was made and on the scale plans to share with two hundred millimetre increase.
This might be a stupid question, but and one of the speakers against mentioned that they had some concerns around the fact that the light um projections didn't go past three P M. Is there a reason why they don't go past three P M? Because obviously the report does acknowledge that there might be a loss of evening light and then these light things only go up to three P M. There also seems to be an error in one on page twenty three where a house is missing. Um but I don't think that's actually going to affect my decision.
And yep, thank you. And so the the measurements were or the the times provided and between nine and three were seen kind of as the and main Liverpool times of the day. And yeah, potentially there there could have been protections to to show later, but this was considered the main amenity time uh for use of the of the garden and and rear space.
Just want to add to that, if that's okay. And thi- this is the standard way to carry out sunlight daylight assessments. And so whenever we we um review these reports, they would generally um address these particular times of day.
And I have two questions, Chair. Shall I ask them both together? And the first one's a point of clarity, the first objector mentioned amenity in terms of their conservatory and some the the lights that's that they have and the the view. How much weight can we give to amenity in a conservatory? Because if I'm not wrong, there's there's different consideration given to amenity for and different room usage. So for example, if you're like a bedroom and a living room and a hallway are different, I was wondering about a conservatory because obviously one of the main purposes of a conservatory is to be able to have the, you know, it's a garden room, isn't it, to be able to enjoy the outside space.
Yep, thank you. And yes, I'll come back on on the first question. And so yeah, we would take the conservatory as one of the main kind of amenity spaces of the house. Things like things that we've given maybe somewhat less consideration to in terms of amenity, hallways and landings and but livable spaces such as bedrooms and living rooms and conservatories would kind of fall under that that same category.
And it's more general point, but is there anything else that we can do to alleviate the concerns that the objectors have brought today and councillor Lovett? Because it seems, you know, obviously adjustments were made and as the process has gone on, but there's still quite a few and sticking points and it seems like there are opportunities to me to make some other changes.
And this this committee is discussing the plans that have been submitted. And as shown, if there were, if you're not happy with the plans as is, then it would be a recommendation for refusal and and subsequent application will be required to to address these, but currently that the plans are as is and that's what the decision will be based on.
Thank you, Chair. And just back to the twenty, the twenty centimetres millimetres increase on the garage. So we've heard in the report, it says it's there and it's happening. We've heard, I believe, from the applicant that it isn't, that isn't happening. And we had two specific concerns raised about it. We're making our decision based upon what's in the report. I I'm confused over what what I'm actually deciding on there. Am I deciding on something that does potentially exist and has been objected to? Or am I deciding on something that I've heard does not, is not going to happen and therefore wouldn't be objected to? Yeah, any clarity or help?
Um yeah, I mean, so it's it's been my knowledge up until this point that that there is a two hundred millimetre increase. I'm quite happy to go back to the and the plans that show that. And again, all measurements addressed within the report and are taken from the scales of the plans. And so yeah, so this is, these are the proposed, so you can see particularly the 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 gap in the separation between the door and the window and the height of the carport. And so this is the proposed, if we go back to the existing, you can see that gap is significantly lower. Does that, does that help with your question there? So again, all measurements have been taken from these plans and at least on on these illustrations, that there is a clear increase in height.
Yeah, thank you. It does help. Um this may not be sensible or within our ways of going forward, but would it be something we could attach a condition to in agreeing these plans, saying that there would be no increase in heights in the garage?
So we, um it for point of clarification, whenever we're considering planning applications, we're considering the plans, the plans form the approved documents and that is essentially what the committee is would be approving. And it's not necessarily what's written in the committee report, it's certainly not what's said by an applicant at committee. It's the plans that that are the important thing, is the measurements on those plans that would be enforceable in future. We can't, um we can't pick and choose which bits bits of an application we approve and which bits we don't. And we either approve the application or we refuse the application if we consider that increase in height to be unacceptable. Um I I mean, the um offer us officer assessment is that that increase in height is acceptable.
And just just to add to that. Thank you. Just for the, just just for the record, yeah, that there's a there's a condition on granted consent which says. There's a condition on the on on any consent which says the 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 plans approved are, and it lists the drawing numbers. So the plan that's presented to you would be the approved plan, which shows a twenty centimetre increase.
Thank you.
So that's a recorded vote and those in favour are councillors Kendrick, Haynes, Smith and Sue Sands.
Uh those gates.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, everybody. Really disappointed. Thank you very much. You have the right idea. Well, thank you, Matthew. I can see your tracks.
Thank you, Chair. The application reference number twenty four slash zero one two nine five slash U twenty three Beckles is for a change of use from a C three dwelling to a C two residential children's home for two children. I'd like to draw committee's attention to the updates report. We have received an additional representation from one of the neighbours regarding a slight difference between the red line boundary used in the audience survey extract on page twenty sixth of the report and the one submitted by the applicant along with the existing and proposed plans. Uh for the drawing, it's evident that the changes in the drawing are minimal and no change of boundary of twenty three Beckles is proposed as part of this application. For the avoidance of any doubt, the red line boundary shown on page twenty six of the report will not be listed as an approved plan in any decision. The red line boundary plan used in the drawing, which is shown on the screen, reference number G J slash twenty four slash two one six seven slash zero one revision A uh will be listed in the approved plan of any decision and all previous red line drawings will be superseded. The subject property is located in Beckles, which is a residential cul-de-sac of twenty foot dwelling situated in southwest of the city. The property is located in the southwest end of the cul-de-sac and is a semi-detached bungalow on land that slopes down to south and west. The property shares boundaries with twenty Lankresen, which is situated on the west. But because of the elevation, this is situated a bit lower than the twenty three Beckles. And we have the properties on the west, sorry, east side are at a higher elevation because of the slope. And it shares boundary with eighteen Lankresen and twenty one big close to the south. The properties in Beckles are generally at a higher elevation than those from the Lankresen. The cul-de-sac is accessed via road from the Lankresen located to the west. So this is a view from the Lankresen road, which actually see the twenty three Beckles. So this is a view from the Lankresen route, which actually see the 23 back close. The connecting road, which is shown on the figure, is a straight, but features a motorway in line due to the hilly terrain and forms a T-shaped junction on the top. Most properties in Beck Close have individual driveways and many also features attached garages. The subject dwelling is at a lower elevation than its driveway and is accessed by steps. It benefits from a generous private garden to the rear and side of the property. Internally, the property comprises of four bedrooms, a dining room, a kitchen and a toilet. There is parking space for one car located in the front of the property, which falls short of the required two spaces. Spaces therefore likely requiring an on-street parking for an additional vehicle. Beck Close is situated in an unrestricted parking zone. That's the image of the access to the property. That's an image from the close which currently demonstrate the existing on-street parking. This is the existing and the proposed plans. The proposal is to change the use of dwelling to a C2 residential institution. The property is intended to accommodate a children who have experienced development difficulties or placement breakdowns. A maximum of two children aged between eight and 17 will occupy the property under 24/7 staff supervision. In total, the proposed home will accommodate up to four individuals, which includes two children and two staff members. The two staff members will work a 16-hour shift from 7am to 11pm. One staff member will sleep in and go off shift at 8am next morning, while the other will leave at 11am the same day, 11pm the same day, sorry. To ensure children's safety, a walk-in night staff member will be on duty from 10pm to 8am. Remind awake throughout the night. No physical alterations to the property are proposed. We have received several objection to the application, primarily concerning potential noise, potential antisocial activities, traffic impacts associated with the proposal. However, after careful review, we have considered a number of factors in recommending the approval. Firstly, the proposal would result in the loss of an existing C3 dwelling. The new use would still provide a living accommodation. The provision for supported housing for young people represents a benefit that carries way in planning balance and could satisfy one of the criteria of policy DM15. GNLP 5 homes support specialist housing with good access to local services, including sites allocated for residential use, unless there are significant adverse impact that justify a refusal. Policy DM13 regarding the residential institution supports such developments where they are located in sustainable areas suitable for housing and are not designated for alternative non-residential uses and are conveniently situated with direct pedestrian access to local facilities and bus routes. This property is located within less than a mile from frequent bus routes and convenient stores with schools situated within walking distance. On balance, even though it would result in the loss of a C3 dwelling, the proposal does not result in the total loss of housing as the existing dwelling would be converted to an alternative residential use. Regarding the amenity of, regarding the impacts on the residential amenity, this is a quiet suburb and cul-de-sac predominantly made up of family housing. It is noted that introducing a residential institution for children within a quiet residential setting has a potential to cause disturbance to the harm to the amenity of neighbouring occupiers and the characters of the area. However, the proposal is only to, is for two children to occupy a four-bedroom house, which could otherwise be occupied by a family of three or more children or as a house in multiple occupation with up to six residents without requiring any planning permission. The presentations also acknowledge the previous use of this particular dwelling as a student housing. Therefore, the proposal would not significantly alter or intensify the use of the property beyond that of a typical four-bedroom dwelling. To manage the potential of increased activity, that could disrupt the quiet enjoyment of neighbouring dwellings. We recommend a condition limiting the occupancy of the property. Limiting the occupancy of property to a maximum of two children. Subject to this condition, it is not anticipated that any additional noise, activity or comings and goings would reach a level that causes unacceptable harm to the residential amenity beyond that of a typical four-bedroom dwelling. The applicant will also be advised to share their management plan with the local community and key stakeholders before the first use of the property. In terms of traffic, we agree that the change of use rises potential concerns regarding the traffic and additional on-street parking demands. The existing driveway has a length of nearly 10 metres, which can accommodate one car comfortably. However, due to its shape, it cannot accommodate a second car and a second car parked on the curb would obstruct the existing pedestrian pathway. As mentioned above, the site is sustainably located with relatively close proximity to public transport routes. Therefore, some staff and visitors may travel to and from the site using the modes of transport other than private cars. There will be a maximum of two staff members on shift at any given time and the children aged between eight and 17 are unlikely to own their own cars. With one parking space on site, the proposed change of use would typically require one additional on-street parking space and up to three on-street parking space during the shift change hours. Given the existing use as a C3 dwelling would generate an average six trips per day, the proposed change of use is not expected to lead to an increase in the number of trips. This is confirmed by the highways officer. And there are alternative spaces nearby that could accommodate the on-street parking demand. This is unlikely to result in significant highway safety concerns, which is also confirmed by the highways officer. The existing lack of parking spaces may lead to some on-street parking for a second car as expected for a four-bedroom house, which could otherwise be used by a family or an HMO for up to six residents without requiring a planning permission. Since only two young people would live in this property, it is unlikely to significantly increase use or cause any unacceptable harm to the residential amenity. We have received additional representation which mentioned in the updated report regarding the restrictive governance that restrict any parking on the current paved area in front of the site and question the bicycle parking proposed in front of the property. However, restrictive contents are not material to the determination of planning application. The grant of planning application does not override any private restrictions on the land and the developer will need to address these issues separately. We have also received a presentation which mentioned about the credibility of the applicant citing the previous enforcement records from Ofsted. The background of applicants is outside the scope of material planning considerations. Their standards and regulations are monitored and subject to the other regulations. However, in response to the concerns raised in the representations, the applicant have provided clarification by submitting their latest Ofsted report, which confirms that the children's home provider meets the required standards. Subject to the condition listed in the report, we recommend the application for approval. Yeah, there is an additional condition which is mentioned in the updated report as well.
Good morning, Mr. Shepherd. I apologize for the slow start, but this morning, the gods are against me. I've woken up with blocked hearing and I'm not hearing a word of what is taking place. So bear with me. I wish to proceed because I'm also representing two residents at number 20 and 22. And I submit their authority to speak on their behalf. Before I start, I also like to declare my credentials. I have been a qualified social worker since 1964 and have worked in children's departments, social services, both as a childcare officer, social worker, supervisory roles and in senior management roles. If I may start with my presentation. Point one, the applicant has stated children will be taken from all parts of the country, although would make this authority a priority. This facility would not therefore be exclusive to Norfolk. Given that, I would urge the committee to consider the housing needs of city residents and remember the approximate 4,300 people on the Norwich housing waiting list. Point two, moving children who have adverse childhood experiences, great distances is contrary to safeguarding principles. Where a child's needs should be paramount and should be kept as close to their home territory unless there are exceptional reasons to do otherwise. You should not underestimate the impact of moving a child from a familiar area, from family and friends and their cultural background. Point three, the planning officer has compared the proposal with normal family model with perhaps three children. Section 41 of his report, which in my opinion is wrong, given the needs of the unit and the would-be transient group staying short, medium, long stay applicant statement. Point four, it is difficult to reconcile this unit catering for children with adverse experiences being run by two staff during the day and one at night, given the level of care likely to be needed, even allowing for the fact it is hoped they will attend local schools and assuming they are not excluded. There is no explanation in the plans as to workers' role, training qualifications and what support they will receive. Will those two staff also do cooking, washing and cleaning or will others be brought in? From my professional experience, I suspect there will be more callers than predicted by the planning officer and therefore more vehicles needing parking and more comings and goings and a greater impact on the community as suggested. Point five, I'm concerned that as the business is operated from Leicester, how issues and problems raised by the community will be dealt with by the company or the landlord. If problems are not resolved, what recall do residents have? The city's conciliation service is voluntary and does not apply to landlords and businesses who operate outside the city boundary. Point six, the Bluebella State, as it was originally called, is on land formerly owned by the church commissioner. There are restrictive clauses in Aldis. Is the planning officer satisfied there are no restrictive clauses on 23 back close preventing it being used for business purposes? Sadly, the increasing numbers of conversions to multi-occupancies is eroding this community with the increasing transient population with no commitment to the life and soul of the area. Finally, Mr. Chairman, twisting an old saying, a lank king canute. You and the committee can stop the tide of negative change. Thank you.
Oh, right. I've lived at this house for 35 years in my family and the traffic conditions have got worse and worse and worse. And the reason I asked to put those photographs up is this is just one instance when the officer was there. And as you can see, the gentleman is parked illegally on the on the footpath. This happens all the time on both sides. It means when I come out of my house, if I'm walking, I have to go on the road. It was also when he came, he found that the bin lorries couldn't get there. And if you saw the previous photograph, the one that's previous to that one, which is also taken at the same time, you see he's, once he's parked there, the only access to that property is down those steps. If there's a fire, people can't get out if they put a van there and the fire hydrant is on the path the other side from that car. And when people park on both sides on the pavements, they block the fire hydrant. I personally have had to have fire hydrant at my house to stop it being burnt down. That's the only place you can have it. The, if you saw the other photograph, if you go back to the first one. Yeah, these are all photographs, the one of the car on the hill, yeah? If you see the car on the hill, you see that, see, look, even on that photograph, there is just gone past. You've had cars parked illegally and this is just coming on a stinkled visit. This happens all the time. Now, if you, what you don't see on the first photograph is, is that there's a car parked in red, as you can see, you see it's parked illegally there, blocking the pavement. At the present moment, we have two cars parked regularly there on the left, blocking the pavement, two on the right, blocking the pavement. You cannot walk up and down, you have to go into the road. The lines at the top of the road, the T junction has not been marked. You have people who will be coming in, large numbers of cars coming to this place. There's going to be serious accidents and serious injuries. And I predict that it's possible that one of those could even be a child being severely injured or killed. So the other thing I want to raise is that when the officer came to see me, I pointed out to him and also in one of the documents when I wrote my some of the comments from all the people in this close that do not want this. My, I'm actually registered disabled and I told Vishnu about this when he visited. And one of the points on this document is, is that you should take into account people who are disabled under the equality law. And if you read, I think it's 50 something, you'll see that that has been completely ignored. And therefore, the fact that it is going to have a severe effect on my ability to get to and from my property and the fact that because I've had over 20 operations to keep my site going, at one point I was told I could be blind the next morning. And so as you can see, cars parked all over the pavements, forcing me to walk into into this kind of thing is going to mean that my quality of life and my amenity is going to be massively affected. The other thing I wanted to make clear to you is I'm responsible for an ancient tree, which is literally, you can, it's literally available for anyone to get to. So basically, that tree is 1,000 years old. The Woodland Trust wants to make it a listed, it's equivalent to a listed building now. It has over 1 million species associated with it. All these cars are going to be blasting their fumes at it from less than 20 metres. It's also accessible for people. Say one of these children decides to light a fire or go over there. You're talking about a tree which is now thought to be associated with Kets rebellion. And it is going to be under severe risk and I've been protecting it for 35 years. Now, so I would like finally to add, why wasn't my disability, I told Vishnu about my eyes and the effects it's had on me and why was it not looked into and completely ignored in this report? Thank you very, thank you very much for your time.
So I've got a statement to read out on behalf of an objector who couldn't be here today. We are disheartened to discover that you as a committee will not be discussing any of the recent objections from the neighbouring community within 23 back close. will not be discussing any of the recent objections from the neighbouring community within twenty-three Beck Close. The comments left by the neighbours should be considered. We live in a close of twenty-four properties and there were twenty-one objections made from neighbouring residents. Therefore, we as a family are writing our concerns here now for the record and I would like them to be read out in a meeting and seriously considered. Parking, from the application made, they have advised there would be two onsite staff members working a sixteen-hour day shift, seven AM to eleven PM, with a crossover of a night staff member that will come on shift for ten hours from ten PM until eight AM. This means there will be an overlap of an hour where the shifts cross over. There is only one parking space outside the property, not two as claimed. For one hour on two separate occasions in any day, there will be a need for at least three parking spaces for this residence. Our close is already full to capacity of parked vehicles, with cars having to park on both sides of the road, on the corners, up the hill and on pavements. We have a commercial van and we find it difficult to drive the van down the close with cars parked on the corners and down the hill. It's difficult for drivers to see around the parked vehicles. There have been several occasions where vehicles have nearly collided as they can't see when approaching the top of the hill. There have been multiple occasions where, where we have had to ask those visiting Beck Close to move or re-park so that we can get through. Bin lorries and delivery vehicles struggle to get through. If a resident needs an emergency service, the emergency service could struggle too. The volume of traffic that would come with this business is endless. It won't just be the three, three vehicles that belong to the carers that attend the property. There will be an assessment team, managers, maintenance people, maintenance people, gardeners, social services, Ofsted inspectors, food delivery, removal people, family members of the children coming to visit and possibly tutors. They will all need to park somewhere. There will be a rise in air pollution and a loss of road access for sure and it won't be possible for everyone to park. There was a meeting recently in December where the owner, the owners of Gateshead Group Limited and the planning officer attended the property. The owner of twenty-three Beck Close parked in their parking spot. The other three parked off-site in another street, outside another person's home on a neighbouring street as they couldn't park anywhere. This will be a recurring nuisance. Concerns about the organisation. We have concerns about the company's integrity. The Gateshead Group do not have a website. They have only been in operation since February twenty-twenty-two and their accounts are dormant according to gov.uk. They haven't had a financial audit since operating, which is unclear as to why that is. There is an Ofsted, Ofsted report from twenty-twenty-three where a full inspection took place at another site. Significant concerns were identified in relation to the care given to the children and the ability of the leaders, managers and staff to protect the children and keep them safe. The home was judged as inadequate and Ofsted suspended the home's registration on the ninth of November as necessary action needed to take place. In December twenty-twenty-three, it was found that the leaders and managers continued to operate the home when the registration was suspended. This is clear that they don't take care of these children, they don't take the care of these children seriously. They have found a loophole in the system and are exploiting it without any care for the children or the neighbourhood that surrounds it. Property owner, the owner of twenty-three Beck Close also runs the property next door and lets it out to students and there have been occasions where marijuana can be spelt, smelt when walking past the property. So far, these guys have kept themselves to themselves, but this is also a factor of why this business should find an alternative property elsewhere. These children are young and vulnerable and they will live next door to students that smoke weed. Staffing, how can a person be expected to continue to work at their best when they are expected to work sixteen-hour days? This seems ludicrous. The staff that will be employed will be carers, not what we know as social care workers, where they have a degree or qualifications and have vast amounts of training and understanding. We have seen a job advert on Indeed for the residential in Gloucester advertising at eleven pound forty-four to fourteen pounds per hour. These children that have reportedly got behavioural issues will not be supported well and the evidence proves this has already happened at their existing residential care home in the Ofsted report. We don't have any confidence that this business will be well managed and we have no confidence in the competence of the training that will be provided to the staff that they will be hiring. Um, do let me know if I'm going over time, by the way. Protecting the residents. Beck Close is a no cold calling zone to protect the vulnerable elderly people that live here. Some find it difficult to walk around and some with serious health issues are at the end of their life. The children in care could bring a multitude of antisocial behaviour to those that are vulnerable. The carers won't be able to enforce the children to stay in, follow rules or meet their behavioural expectations. If the children followed the rules, then they wouldn't be in this situation. We personally have two young children that we don't want to be on the receiving end of antisocial behaviour. The children in care are vulnerable to others, e.g. drug dealers, gangs, thieves, abusers, et cetera, and they could easily bring this crowd to our close. The close has inhabitants who cannot defend themselves if something was to happen. The Ofsted report evidence how the managers were not receptive to complaints, which then brings further concern about how our complaints as residents within the close would be dealt with. This is a business that has too many comings and goings for the quiet residential area that is Beck Close. Residents pay top end for their home, whether private renting or mortgage, and they do this because of its location. Beck Close is a quiet cul-de-sac that we want to enjoy as a quiet, low-footfall, low-risk area to live in. We have no crime in the area and we want to keep it this way. The worries of this planning going ahead will decrease the property value in the area. Our sister-in-law is an estate agent for Abbotz in Norwich and she has confirmed that if the area becomes a high risk to antisocial behaviour and crime rates increase, this will certainly bring down the value. She knows of another location where something similar happened in the West Parade in Golden Triangle, where property value decreased. Beck Close has a few young families starting out that have saved and purchased their home for a property that if anywhere else could have been much cheaper. Yeah, I've got very little left, thank you. But it's the location, the quiet residential cul-de-sac that has sold them, sold it to them to live here. Their forever home. Personally, we have paid a huge sum for our property for which we are extending and this is because this is to be our forever home, but it won't be if this planning is to go ahead. We've spoken to all our neighbours and the consensus is the same. We all do not want this planning permission to go ahead and this business to be granted the go-ahead. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Jeloush, I'm here to represent, I'm here to represent.
Thank you. On paragraph fifty-three, even though I've not clearly mentioned about the disability, which is one of the representation mentioned, we have acknowledged that on-street parking in front of the proposed dwelling could block access to the neighbouring properties or obstruct the pedestrian pavement, which is rightly pointed out by one of the representations. And regarding the tree which mentioned, it is located almost like more than thirty metres away from the property. Uh, it's, I think it's somewhere here. I assume so. So, uh, there are no physical works proposed to this, uh, this application and it's just a change of use. So there won't be any impact on the trees as, as concerned. And. Yeah, currently there are four bedrooms. So what they propose is for two bedrooms for the kids and for the children and one for the staff.
And yeah, just could we have a bit more clarity on the parking issues? Because I understand, you know, without planning permission, there could be a family or, um, you know, lots of single people living there that could all have a car, there could be many more cars. But some, yeah, is there anything that we can do to, um, address concerns? Is that a matter between, um, occupier and neighbours? It's, it's one of those situations where there's clearly an issue as there is in many places in the city. Is there anything we can do to, yeah, just to address that and to prevent things getting worse? Because I, you know, I just want to acknowledge that it is a worry for people and a realistic one.
I think the key thing to note, um, when it comes to the, to the impacts of this development is we're comparing the existing use with the proposed use. The existing use, as we've discussed, is a decent-sized family dwelling that could, could have a number of cars associated with it. It would be perfectly reasonable for someone in a house of that size to own two or may, or maybe more, um, vehicles. Um, the impact of the developments, uh, we acknowledge that there would be some comings and goings associated with the staff, especially during change over times and, and that there would be additional visitors to the property as there would be with the, with the dwelling, with deliveries and, and other professionals visiting for, for various things throughout the day. Um, but none of those increases in our minds cause great concern or, or, or would significantly increase the, the number of on-street parking, um, spaces required. It, it, it's a very minor increase compared to the existing lawful use. Um, and that there, there is opportunity, it's a, it's not a controlled parking zone and there is opportunity to park, perhaps not as close as you'd like to the site because of, um, on-street parking pressures, but, but there is, there is opportunity to park, um, in the surrounding streets.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you to officers for the report and all the speakers. Can I just ask, um, the objection letter that was read out, um, read out made reference to residents' objections were not acknowledged, not addressed, not included in the report. And this is mainly kind of for my clarification and understanding really, but would, would that be right in suggesting that the vast majority of points that were raised would be operational concerns around the business? And therefore, you know, more, more appropriately dealt with by licensing regulatory committees rather than us here in planning, so that they would not constitute material concerns for us to necessarily be concerned about. So in terms of our decision-making, that's, that's one thing. But also that's why the, the resident, you know, who felt they were not addressed, that's why perhaps they weren't, because they were not material concerns to do with the, the building. Um, and second kind of serious point, similar point again to my, for my clarification, the gentleman who spoke last against mentioned about the equalities, diversity issues not being addressed. And I suspect that's because obviously in the report it says there are no equality or diversity issues. Um, could also just elaborate a little bit more on exactly what in the planning process we mean by equality and diversity issues and what we have or haven't responded to, if, if that makes sense, apologies.
I'll respond to your first question, which was about the number of objections and, and whether they've been addressed. Um, so the objection that, that I read out from a neighbour, uh, the, the statement, um, referred to twenty-one objections being made. Um, I've just checked our report and it, it notes twenty-two letters of representation were received. So, um, very similar numbers, ours slightly higher. So it looks like, um, we did capture all of the, um, objections that they, they note. Um, within the table, um, just under paragraph sixteen of the reports, there, there is a, a table which addresses the individual points that were raised during each of those, um, representations. So, some of those will refer to C, you see main issue two, which will be, um, something that we, that we feel is a main issue and is, is addressed, um, fully within the report. Other issues, as you say, are more operational or outside of the planning remit. Um, those will be more likely to be responded to in, um, a chunk of text within that report. Um, just to make it clear that that doesn't form part of our assessment, but, but nonetheless, we are, um, providing a response to each of those objections, yeah. Um, David's going to respond on the second point.
Yeah. Yeah, just to pick up on the equality and diversity issue, I think that the reason it's not specifically um, identified in the report is, is part, is mainly because our assessment of the issues that the application raises is, is that the general, the, the impact upon the wider community, um, in terms of car parking, obstruction of payments and things like that, isn't as, as severe as, 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 as those who are raising objections believe it will be. So in, in, pardon me, to our, in our view, there, there isn't an equality and diversity issue.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? In contact.
It goes back to the parking and movements and stuff like that. And it may not be appropriate because I couldn't see in any of the objections that anyone had said this particular time would be a real problem for people moving around. But would it be appropriate to perhaps, it might be overkill, but perhaps to condition that the movements are kept to particular times that would be deemed of less impact? For example, I'm thinking if we could minimise movement around school runtimes, um, like avoiding having deliveries around that time for the property, for example, that might go some way to mitigate some of the concerns around risk to people moving around on foot.
I think essentially our point as officers is that we don't consider that the issue would be significant. Um, and that the difference between the comings and goings associated with the C-three dwelling compared to that of a C-T, C-two residential institution would be largely similar. compared to that of a C two residential institution would be largely similar, especially when we're limiting the number of children to two. Um, the, the number of occupants and the comings and goings will be similar to, to that of a dwelling. So I, I wouldn't consider such a condition to be necessary, um, um, which is one of the tests that it has to pass. Um, yeah.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? No, therefore we shall come to the, unless the planning officers have any further comments. No, therefore we should come to the opportunity for members to discuss the application. Uh, the recommendation is to approve. I would, as Chair, wish to propose that. Do I have a second for that, so we can discuss it? Thank you very much. Do members have any comments they wish to make? Yeah, cut to the.
And well, just to say that I've, you know, listened very carefully to everything that's been said and I, I feel that two members of staff looking after two children is probably more support than children that, that don't have um, issues that have led them to be in care have. And I, I think, you know, when, when you look at that road, it, it just looks like a really nice place for children who are perhaps suffering a little to go and um, and yeah, have the space they need. Um, and I hope, you know, if the plans are approved that they um, that they get a warm welcome. I mean, I, I do hope that there'll be um, you know, good communications between them, neighbours and um, and the company, but I, I feel, you know, if, if you're a member of staff working in a, you know, really small children's home and a neighbour knocks and you've got a professional duty to, you know, to be a good neighbour in a way that perhaps your average neighbour doesn't. I, um, you know, I've knocked on neighbours' doors and said, excuse me. And there's, there's no real onus on them to actually take it into account. I, I just feel that they have the potential to be a better neighbour than your average neighbour perhaps. And I hope that the, I hope that concerns are ill-founded and that people will be welcoming to the children that need it.
Thank you Chair. Um, we had a very similar application come up recently uh, in a very similar situation to um, a cul-de-sac in a quiet area. And at the time, um, lots of concerns were raised by the people in that cul-de-sac. And as I recall, um, they were concerned about parking and the coming and going and the hours and the children was there and, and uh, I listened to councillor Hopener who put a passionate um, speech about the need for these children to have a secure, safe place to be because that is in her line of work, which um, as a, well, as a retired teacher, I also recognise that children need to have a safe place. Um, interestingly, although a lot of issues were raised by the people, the residents within the cul-de-sac about um, parking and the coming and going, um, we haven't received one complaint since um, the private dwelling was turned into a children's home um, for more than two children, I happen to have, I happen to have, uh, since then. It, there simply hasn't been an issue, well, at least not one that we've heard of. I don't know if they've complained to City Hall, but, but we certainly haven't heard of any issues with it. Thank you. Maybe just to, you know, put your mind at rest.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? No, I shall myself just uh, make one or two comments. I mean, we've had an older discussion on a number of issues, not all of which I think were particularly relevant to the planning uh, application in terms of planning law. Uh, this of course is the Planning Applications Committee. I think at the end of the day, I think the one thing that I, I thought was uh, most salient was obviously about the parking. But I have to be honest and say, I don't see, clearly if this was to remain a, a residential uh, property, they would be, you know, likely to be a family, probably with about two cars. This is quite an affluent uh, uh, build, uh, building and often you do have two cars. So I really don't think, see that this would create more problems in terms of parking than if it were just an ordinary residential property. And I do entirely agree that there is a need for accommodation for children, obviously, who, you know, may well be in, in need of professional help. So I will very much be supporting this application. Are there any further comments that any other one would like to make? Therefore, shall we move to the boat? All those in favour of the application, please show. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, that has now concluded today's agenda and thank you. May I wish all uh,